Sister dust.
Or the another one, they will cook up both barra and so on.
And the other came and said that the ashes are going.
Who may not understand, Bangalore will not understand.
A two incident which took place in Bangalore.
Oh, the name and the mouth of my anger took away.
Immediately that sister was greatly greed.
Or any pastor Joel to poison them, now the party is Sunday school person, you have to be vulnerable, can you find any one of the way you know it to see you around or the cup and around or the apple pool and around, I mean, so on.
Immediately she went to Pastor Joel and said, look at the Sunday school children, how they are grown up, they are coming and rebuking me, saying that I am dust and ashes and worm.
I would say, no, I'm going to put this out, you said, I repeat it, that's all.
He said, they are saying nothing new, what you said, they are repeating it.
You come and you cook to see who you are, he is like this, I repeat it, then you come to the devil's soul, the people who are on top of you, you can't kill them, you can't kill them, you can't kill them, you can't kill them.
You only confess that you are dust and ashes, you only could confess that in the presence of God, but when others are humiliating you, you could not accept it.
The first thing, the people who are ashamed, they will raise you up.
Humble yourselves in the sight of the Lord and he shall lift you up.
In this way, we will get what we want.
Today's Bible study is if we humiliate, humble ourselves, then what all will we receive?
We will eat our own meat, we will eat our own meat.
If we do not humble ourselves, then how, what a pathetic state, state will go to.
I have four verses about eating, eating, what will happen, I will tell you.
To humble ourselves, I tell you four verses, and if we do not humble ourselves, the effect of it also, I say four verses.
Today, even if we can't eat, in this hall, the Lord is counseling that we might humble ourselves. A child of God should practice himself to humble himself. When we humble ourselves, then the Lord will grant blessing to the land. In the second Chronicles seven fourteen, when we read.
What is told here? It is said that my people, which are called by my name, when they shall humble themselves. A child of God should humble himself, and that is what the Lord commands him. They should go to the presence of God and practice to humble themselves. When they should likewise humble themselves, then the Lord will forgive your sin and will heal their lands as the Lord. Today, it is impossible for many to humble themselves. Even the others cannot humiliate them, neither can they themselves humble themselves. If we cannot humble ourselves, then can others allow us to humiliate? We will never give room for it. When we do not humble ourselves, then we will not be exalted, and we will be the cause for many other problems. That is why the word of God says that he who humbles himself shall be exalted. If you desire for God to exalt you, then you yourself should practice to humble yourself. When you humble yourself, you will be sent to a pathetic state. That is what the word of God states. In Acts of Apostles eight chapter. Verse thirty three. In Acts eight thirty three. That which, that work which took place when he humbled himself was that judgment was taken away.
We will eat our own meat, judgment, eh, judgment, we ate it.
In Isaiah fifty three. It is told here that he was taken from prison and from judgment. Although we have justice on our part, our justice is being hit out when we are humbling ourselves. How many of you are humbling yourselves today? Today, exaltation or highness is being found more in the church among the people and in the society. The more man is being wanting to exalt himself, he is humiliated. In the word of God, we see many of them have humbled themselves, and therefore the Lord has exalted them. When Samuel first met Saul, he humbled himself, and he called his family to the least of it. Firstly, when Samuel was speaking to Saul. That's not the whole Israel seek for you. For Samuel nine twenty one, when we read. He said that I am the least of all the tribes of Israel. My family is the least of all the families. That is how he is humbling himself. This is the beginning stage of Saul. But as days went by, he was not able to humble himself. When they said that Saul has killed thousands, and David ten thousands, he could not accept that word. What does some of them do? For some days, they will humble themselves, and later they cannot. In we read the Philippians two eight. What is told there? Jesus humbled himself until his death. A child of God should humble himself unto death in the Christian life and go. He humbled himself even to the death of the cross. If he had to humble himself, all the days of his life even unto cross means, then when will he be exalted? As you keep humbling yourself according to the situation, the Lord will keep exalting you each time. Not only that, in his glory also, he will exalt you. Jesus counted not as Paul to take the form of godliness, but he took the form of slavery as a man in this world. He came to this world, he was beaten and broken, and he gave his life as a slave. Therefore, above all names, he has been exalted. When he humbled himself in this world, many miracles took place. There were many wonders which took place. Magnificent works were done by him. When he humbled himself on the cross, then he got the name above all names. Therefore, what does the word of God say? In James chapter four verse ten. You humble yourself before the Lord. When you shall humble yourselves in the sight of the Lord. Then he shall lift you up. A child of God should practice to humble himself in sight of the Lord. Some of them do not like others to humiliate them. Therefore, they will humble themselves alone. When they testify. When they speak. Some of them say that they are, they are a worm, they are a dead dog, and they are dust and ashes like this. Do not they say this? Some of them, when they testify, they say that they are dust and ashes, but only when the dust is being touched, they can see what it is. Will others, when others humiliate you, will they heal themselves? When a lady, she used to take, get up to testify, she always used to say, praise the Lord, that I am a worm, I am a dead dog, I am a ash and dust like this, she used to testify. Therefore, whenever the sister used to rise, rise up to testify, they will remember only dust and ashes. One day after testimony, the meeting was over. One Sunday school boy came and called her sister dust. And the other came and said that the ashes are going. Immediately that sister was greatly greed. Immediately she went to Pastor Joel and said, look at the Sunday school children, how they are grown up, they are coming and rebuking me, saying that I am dust and ashes and worm. He said, they are saying nothing new, what you said, they are repeating it. You only confess that you are dust and ashes, you only could confess that in the presence of God, but when others are humiliating you, you could not accept it. Humble yourselves in the sight of the Lord and he shall lift you up. Firstly, when we humble ourselves, what shall we get? Secondly, when we do not humble ourselves, what will happen? I will tell you about eight persons in the word of God. Four of them, in the midst of all situations, they humble themselves. But four of them did not humble themselves. Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. When we humble ourselves, what will happen? When the child of God will humble themselves, then we receive the great mercy. Firstly, King Ahab, he humbled himself. I placed before you four members who humbled themselves. First is Ahab. He is a king. He was a man who was honored by God. When we consider of him in first Kings. Chapter twenty one. The Lord spoke certain words to him. The Lord said, you have sold yourself, therefore you will be judged, and your family will also go through judgment. In first Kings twenty first, chapter twenty and twenty fifth verse, we see that in the Lord says that you have sold yourself. You have sold yourself. You have sold yourself to your wife. You have become a slave to your wife. You have become a slave to your wife. You are an anointed person, and therefore, because you have sold yourself to your wife, you will have judgment for your family. I will judge your family. I will cause all of them, your family to die, and the blood of them shall the dogs eat likewise he was judged. When the king Ahab just heard the words of judgment, he was very terrified. You should be the right spiritual people. All the people who are anointed are kings. Those who have been washed by the blood of Jesus are the kings. You should not sell your life to anybody in this world. If you sell yourselves, then there will be the judgment of God. Until he could hear the words of judgment, he was very forcibly going into everything. He went and did many works that he might get the vineyard of an ordinary man. The king wanted to go and take away the vineyard of an ordinary man and did many things for it. Finally, what happened? He killed him and he took the place. The king can get places, many vineyards from other places in the world. For that, his wife also was giving hands to him. That was not pleasing to the Lord. Therefore, the Lord gave a judgment for that. He could not accept this judgment. First Kings. Twenty first chapter. Verse twenty seven. Ahab, in the words, he changed his mind. When Ahab heard these words, he became humble himself. He was very greatly afraid of the judgment. Until then, he was going on his own. We should never go into the judgment of God. The judgment of God is very terrible. However, he is rich in his mercies, even so, he is terrible in his judgments. When he shall judge you, can your heart bear it? The Lord gave him a terrible judgment. In the house of Ahab, not even a dog will stay alive. The Lord said, in the place where the dogs lick the blood of Naboth, shall dogs lick the blood even thine? See how it will be? When the king heard these words, he was greatly afraid. He thought, we are the king, we are the king, we are the king, we are the king, you 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 are the king. He thought that he is a king, and therefore, he will reign in his king and lead a life which is glorious, but when the Lord said that your blood shall be licked by the dogs as it licked the blood of Naboth, he was terrified. Because he humbled himself, he escaped the judgment. But his wife did not fear this judgment, neither did she humble herself. Therefore, what happened? Therefore, what happened? That judgment came into her. In second Kings chapter nine, we see that this judgment came upon her. In thirty sixth verse, we see, in the portion of Jesse, shall dogs eat the flesh of Jesse. See how the judgment came upon her. When it was said as judgment, Ahab humbled himself. He tore his garments. He put sackcloth upon his flesh. He fasted and lay in sackcloth and went softly. First Kings twenty one twenty nine. Ahab, when I think of you, I see 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 you. Because he humbled himself before me, this evil shall not come upon his days. If you humble yourself, then the Lord will preserve you, that this evil shall not come upon you and your family. You humble yourselves today. You humble yourselves in the presence of the Lord. If we humble ourselves, we will not lack anything, to the extent we humble ourselves, we will be exalted. If we humble ourselves, then there will no evil befall upon us. If we ignorantly go above this judgment and do not humble ourselves, then this judgment will come upon us. When he heard the word of God, then he humbled himself. When he humbled himself at the word of the Lord, then the Lord preserved him, that the evil shall not come upon him. Secondly, we read about King Josiah who humbled himself. Even in his life, there was a lot of striving. He was not used to hearing the law of the Lord, once when he heard it, he started to cry. He started to fear the Lord when he heard these words. Reiterate the holy name of the Lord. When we hear the law of the Lord, how are we? When the law of the Lord was read before him, he tore his garments. There was a lot of problems in his life too. He had many failures in his life. But now the Lord began to speak to him. Second Kings chapter twenty two. Verses nineteen and twenty. Here, the Lord said that upon this place and upon the inhabitants of this place, they shall become a desolation and a curse. What happened here? The people here went astray from the way of the Lord. They became failures in their lives. They angered the Lord and departing from the Lord by all the works of their hands. They started to follow other gods. This we read in second Kings twenty two seventeen. Here, they were giving gifts to other gods. He said, therefore, the people and the inhabitants of this land shall become a desolation. The Lord said that they will become a curse. Following other gods is a great curse. If God is the Lord, then you follow him. If they are gods, then you follow them. Why should you walk about with two opinions? Therefore, the people of God, if we have to follow the Lord, then we have to follow him rightly. He who is double minded is unstable in all his ways. One thing, you be a sinner or you be a saint. Saying you are following the Lord, do not follow sin. Saying you are following holy life, you should not become a sinner. Calling yourself a Christian, you should not walk contrary to Christ's. You should not worship alien gods. You should not bow down or kneel down before alien other gods. This Josiah was given a judgment. The judgment was that you and your people shall become a desolation and a curse. When he heard this, he was terrified. If when a king was said that he will become a desolate person, will can he accept it? How can you accept this word? You will be a curse and not a blessing. When he heard these words, he immediately humbled himself before the Lord. His heart was broken and he began to weep. Today, we in the presence of God, we should weep. If a child of God should weep in the presence of the Lord, that prayer is being answered. Here, he humbled himself. When he humbled, what happened? Second Kings twenty two twenty one. What is told here? Because you have humbled yourself, you shall run and finish your race in peace. When Ahab, he humbled himself, the Lord preserved him from evil. When Josiah humbled himself, the Lord promised that he shall run his race in peace. If we humble ourselves, we will not receive evil, but only goodness. When we humble ourselves, we are humbling before God. The more we humble ourselves before God, then we will receive the mercy from the eyes of the Lord. How many of you has the mind to humble yourself when you hear the word of the Lord? You should not go like a stranger. You should not go like Jesse when you hear the word of the Lord. When you hear the word of the Lord, if you humble yourself like Ahab and Josiah, then your race will be victorious and you will end in peace. Those days, they tore their garments, but now we have to tear our hearts, that is what is told in Joel. Those days, they put on sackcloth, but now we have to put on the grief according to God. Those days, the kings humbled themselves before the Lord. Can you humble yourselves today? When you hear the word of the Lord, can you humble yourself? Is your heart able to humble? Is your heart able to tear it? Are you able to weep in the presence of God? Some of their hearts are so hard that they cannot weep or shed tears. Even when they see the cross, they cannot cry. Even when they are beaten, they will not cry. It is wrong. We should have a very soft heart within us. We humbling ourselves in the presence of the Lord and weeping and crying is not a loss, that it will bring goodness to. Second Chronicles chapter twelve. Rehoboam, Raja, did a good deed, and he was punished. He and his people, he defers the law of the Lord. See what a criminal person is this. After he established the king's dominance and himself, he defers the law of the Lord. Today, even some people like this, as long as they become steady in their lives, they will seem to be very silent, but after that, they will be very arrogant. As long as the government comes into their control and they come into reign, they will be very silent; after that, they will shake their heads. This Rehoboam is one such person. Once he established the king's dominance and himself, immediately, he took hold of his head. When you have forsaken the law, then you have left the law. When a Christian has left the word of God, then he has departed from the law. This is what we read in Second Chronicles twelve five. He have not forsaken the law, but he has forsaken me, says the Lord. You leaving the word of the Lord and going on your way by your own self, then the Lord leaves you and your family. We should stop working contrary against the word of God, having the word of God with us. What is the fifth verse? He have forsaken me. You leaving the word of the Lord and going on your way by your own self, then the Lord leaves you and your family. We should stop working contrary against the word of God, having the word of God with us. We should stop working contrary against the word of God, having the word of God with us. What is the fifth verse? He have forsaken me. The Lord says therefore, I have forsaken you into the hands of your enemies. When they said that you have left the law, the Lord said that you have forsaken me. When they said that they did not want Samuel, the Lord said that they have not forsaken me, but they have forsaken you. If you have forsaken the law, then you have left the law. Now what is this incident? Now he started to speak to Rehoboam. The Lord said that I have left you to fall into the hands of enemies. When he heard this, he was afraid. If you have left the law, you have left the Lord. Because you have left the law, the law has given you into the hands of your enemies. When he heard this, he was terrified. All the kings of, all the rulers of Israel were afraid. If so, they had the fear that they will be beaten by their enemies. Immediately what they did was? Second Chronicles twelve six and seven. Here the two groups of people, the princes and the kings, humbled themselves. Then the Lord saw them humbling themselves. As the Lord had said, they humbled themselves. Dear beloved, how many of us had this true humiliation? Today, you have to bring this humiliation into your practice. Before the Lord, you should connect your heart, you should break your heart and humble yourselves. What does the Lord say? When they were said that they will be handed over into the hands of their enemies, the Lord said because you have humbled yourself, yourselves, I will not give yourselves into the hands of the enemies. In Second Chronicles twelve seven, it is said clearly that they have humbled themselves, therefore I will not destroy them. I will not pour out my wrath upon Jerusalem. And I will grant them some deliverance. If we humble ourselves, then we will receive favor from the Lord. If we humble ourselves, then the Lord will not pour out his wrath but mercy upon us. When we should consider here, that Rehoboam humbled himself and received the mercy of the Lord. When we humble ourselves, then this evil will not come upon us. When we humble ourselves, then our race will be finished in peace. When we humble ourselves, then we receive the help from the Lord. Fourthly, we can see about a king called Manasseh. Second Chronicles chapter thirty-three, his life is being told. What happened here? Here, the people, when the Lord should speak to them, they will not harken but go on their way. Second Chronicles thirty-three ten, when we read. The Lord spoke to Manasseh and his people. But they would not harken to it. Therefore, the Lord admitted a great judgment in that place. When we read in the eleventh verse. Manasseh, 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 Assyria, Raja, and gave him oil. The Lord spoke to Manasseh and his people. But they would not harken to it. Therefore, the Lord admitted a great judgment in that place. When we read in the eleventh verse. Manasseh, 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 Assyria, Raja, and gave him oil. He was caught among thorns and he was taken to Babylon. Today, how many times is the Lord speaking to you? When you read the word of God, the Lord is speaking to you. When you hear the messages, the Lord is speaking to you. Through the saints of God, the Lord is speaking to you. Through prophecies, the Lord is speaking to you. Through visions, the Lord is intervening with you. Through dreams, the Lord is speaking to you. Face to face, the Lord is speaking to you. In many ways, the word of the Lord is being intervening with you. But you and your children are not able to consider it. What is the end of it? It becomes a captivity. He who was living luxury's life is now being captivated. We had to hear, we are kept to hear the word of the Lord. Even if one word is uttered, you should keenly observe it. You should not turn aside like the second standard children. Your concentration should be on one side itself. What is the Lord want to speak with us? You should keenly observe those words and practice in your life. Here, Manasseh and his people, when the Lord did speak to them, they did not observe it. If you will not harken to the words of the Lord, then you and your people will go into captivity. He was bound by fetters and carried to Babylon. What happened? Second Chronicles thirty-three twelve and thirteen. When he was entreated, when he was afflicted, the Lord called to the Lord. Because they were beaten, only after that they sought for the Lord, but now the message is before you are beaten, you seek the Lord. After you are being hit, you should not go and bow down. You should not go long and be content. You should not preserve after it is come, but you should have preservance. Are the word of God are written as examples to us? They have gone through a terrible path, they were afflicted and then they turned to the Lord. We should not be beaten and then humble ourselves, but before that, we rectifying ourselves and our lives and turning to the Lord. The Lord is speaking to you and you harken to the words of the Lord. If you do not harken to the voice of the Lord today, then how will your state be? Immediately, he humbled himself. He humbled himself greatly. When he humbled himself, the Lord brought him back to his kingdom. In the word of God, we cannot see any king coming back to his kingdom after being captivated, but it is this king Manasseh alone who was brought back to his kingdom. When you humble yourself, you will gain back the state that you have lost. You can regain the strength you have lost. You can regain the salvation you have lost. You can regain this peace you have lost. You can regain the unity you have lost. You can regain the faith that you have lost. You can regain the gifts that you have lost. You can regain the worldly blessings that you have lost. You can regain the rain that you have lost. Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. Ahab humbled himself. Josiah humbled himself. Rehoboam humbled himself. And Manasseh humbled himself. He was able to escape evil. And he got the help from the Lord. He returned back to his kingdom. And with peace, he entered his race. Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. And another four peace persons are there. They are also great people. They are also kings. But we see that they did not humble themselves. Today, we see two kinds of people in the church. We can see two groups of people in the world. One group is humbling themselves and are receiving the grace. One group is not humbling themselves at any situation and they are facing failures. We can see Pharaoh, the first group of the ones who did not humble themselves. In Exodus chapter ten. Verse three. Here we see the two people of God came and spoke to Pharaoh. How long will you refuse to humble yourself? There are miracles which are taking place. And there are also the punishments of the Lord coming upon them. In many ways, the Lord punished them. And what did happen? He did not humble himself. He is a person who could not bend his neck. He was a strong, he is a hard-hearted person. He was a very worst kind. What happened was? The Lord spoke to him and asked him, until when will you not humble yourself? Do you have pride in you? If so, you are sister or brother of Pharaoh. Until when can you not humble yourself? Is it not sufficient you have beaten? It's not sufficient you have got ten chasters in the Lord. Is it not sufficient you have been punished so much? You have on and on been beaten, but you could not humble yourself. It is because humility is not in his birth or in his blood. Only if you have the blood of Jesus in your body, you can humble yourself. If you have the blood of Pharaoh in you, you cannot humble yourself. What is the end of it? What was the end when he did not humble himself? There were ten punishments given to them. The final punishment was that his firstborn was also dead. Even then, he could not humble himself. Finally, what was the end? He was destroyed in the Red Sea. You should not go in your own pride. When you go in an unlimited pride, then truly your life will fall into the Red Sea one day. Some of them have it and therefore they boast; we see from the word of God that some of them boast without anything. The Lord is chasing you and he wants to form you somehow, but humility is not coming into you at all. Many years have gone by, but some of them are not able to humble themselves at all. Even by their words, they cannot humble themselves. If they are not receiving a little respect, then they will burst out. Immediately, they will cause a great problem out of it. This is considered and see as to how many of you are walking with this pride. Moses is asking him, how long will you refuse to humble yourself? He did not know what is humility. If he should say that God is Jehovah, then who is God? Why should I obey him, he said? That is how he used to speak. If they should go and say that he is God, then he will ask who is God? Who is he that I should obey his word? In Exodus chapter five verse two. In five verse two, we see that who is the Lord that I should obey his voice to let Israel go? If you should go to Pharaoh and ask him to humble himself, believe he will come. He is a stiff-necked person. Have you seen the pictures of Pharaoh? Have you seen in any books? Have you seen the pictures of Pharaoh in Bible books? Above his head will see a snake. Above his crown will see a snake. You can see the sign of a snake above his crown. அது சீண்ட சீண்ட பாம்பு படம்நாடுக்கு மத்தவரே எச்சேயது. படத்தை கிளப்போடாது. தாள்த்ததுக்கதுக்கு மனசே வராது.
The more it is being stung it will always be taking only photos.
கதைசில கத்தர் தாள்தாத பட்சத்திலே அவனை சங்கடிலே ஞாய்த்திர்த்து அளித்தார்.
Finally because he did not humble himself he was destroyed in the Red Sea.
இரண்டாவதாக.
Secondly.
இரண்டாம் நாலாகமும், முப்பதிமூனா மதிகாரத்திலே பார்க்கும்படுது.
Second Chronicles chapter thirty three.
மனாசேனுடைய பயனைக் கூறித் தான் பார்க்கலாம்.
We see about the son of Manasseh.
மனாசேனுடைய மகன் ஆமூன் என்று அளக்கப்படுகிறார்.
We see the son of Manasseh who is called Ammon.
அவ்வந்தே பயர் ஆமூன்.
He is called Ammon.
அவன் என்ன செய்தான் தெரியுமா?
What he did was?
மனாசே தன்னை தாள்த்தனெல்லாம் உனக்கு தெரியும். ஆனாலும் அவனுக்கு விக்கரகத்தின் மேலே ஒரு ஆசை இருந்தது.
He knew that Manasseh how he humbled himself but he was craving after the images.
அப்ப கத்தரைப் பின்பற்றன். இவன் விக்கரகத்தைப் பின்பற்ற ஆரம்பித்தான்.
His father followed the Lord and he started to follow the images.
கத்தர் என்ன வண்ணாரே?
What did the Lord do?
அவனுக்கு ஒரு ஞாயத்திருப்பை கொடுக்க ஆரம்பித்தார்.
The Lord also commanded a judgment to him.
ஆனால் இவனாலே தகப்பன்தான்து இது போல தாள்த்த முடியவில்லை.
But he could not humble himself as his father.
தகப்பன் வந்து நல்ல சூனலில் மத்தில் தன்னை தாள்த்தனா. ஆனால் அவனுக்கு பரந்த பிள்ளைக்கு அந்த ஹேப்பிட், அந்த பráctிஸ் அவனுக்கு இல்லாமலே போய்விட்டது.
His father humbled himself in the midst of situations but his son who was born to him had no practice of it at all.
இரண்டாம் நாலாகமும், முப்பதிமூனு, இருவதிமூனு, இருவதினாலை நீங்க படியீங்கள்.
In second Chronicles chapter thirty three verses twenty three and twenty four.
தன் தகப்பனாகிய மனாசே தன்னை தாள்திக்கொண்டதுபோல இந்த ஆமூன் என்பவன் கத்தர்க்கு முன்பாக தன்னை தாள்தாமல் மேன்மேலும் அகிரமம் செய்துவந்தான். அவன் உலேகரர் அவனுக்கு விரோதமாய் கட்டுப்பாடுபண்ணி அவன் அரண்மனையிலே அவனைக் கொண்டுபோட்டார்கள்.
பாத்தீங்களா? ஒருவனுடை முடிவு தாள்தாத பட்சத்திலே ஒரு மனிஷனுடை முடிவு எவ்வளவு சிக்கிரமாக குடூரமாக முடிந்துவிட்டது என்றது பாருங்க.
See how the end of the life is being ended in a tragic manner when he is not able to humble himself.
அவன் தன் தகப்பன் தன்னை தாள்தினது போல இவன் தன்னை தாள்த்ததுல்லை.
He could not humble himself as his father.
தகப்பன் தாள்தினான். ஆனால் அந்த பráctிஸ் பிள்ளைக்கு இல்லாமல் போய்விட்டது.
His father humbled himself but this practice was not in his hand.
அவனுக்கு ஒரு ஜட்ஜுமெண்ட் வந்தது. அவன் தன்னை தாள்தாமல் அவன் நிமின்னு நின்று போதுது. அவ்வந்தே அரண்மனையிலே அன்றிக்கிய அவனைக் கொண்டுபோட்டார்கள்.
When the judgment came upon him because he humbled not himself he was slew in this palace.
அனைக்காவும் தாள்த்திருந்தா கத்தர் அவனுக்கே இரக்கங்குடுத்துருப்பார்.
If he had humbled himself the Lord would have shown mercy upon him.
அந்தக்கு அவன் சாகவேண்டிய அவசியமில்லை.
It was not needful for him to die that day.
அந்த ஆமூன் தன்னை தகப்பன் தாள்தினதை அவன் அந்த பளக்கத்தைக் கொண்டுவரவே இல்லை.
This Ammon did not bring the practice of humbling like his father.
நாம் ஆராதிக்கிற ஏசு தன்னை தாள்தினவர்.
Ah Jesus whom we worship was able to humble himself.
நாம் ஆராதிக்கிற தேவன் மர்ந்தபொறியின்றன்னை தாள்தினவர்.
A God whom we worship has humbled himself until his death.
அவர் தன்னை தாள்தினது போல நாமும் நம்மை தாள்தினால் நம் இரக்கங்களையும் கிருவைகளையும் பிட்டு வரும் மகிமையிலே மேலான நாமத்தை நம் சொதுங்கிருத்துக்கொள்ள முடியும்.
As he did humble ourselves if we also should humble ourselves then we will receive the mercies and grace from the Lord and we will be glorified then in eternity.
மூன்றவது சிதேக்கியா என்ற ராஜாவை நாம் பார்க்கலாம்.
Thirdly we can read about a king called Sidikia.
அவனும் தன்னை தாள்த்தவில்லை என்று நாம் பார்க்கும்படியும்.
We see that he also did not humble himself.
இரண்டாம் நாலாகமும், முப்பதியாராம் அதிகாரத்தைப் பார்க்கும்படுது.
In second Chronicles chapter thirty six.
அவன் கத்தரடிய பார்வைக்கு பொல்லாப்பானதைச் செய்துகொண்டே வந்தான்.
He rebelled against the Lord.
அவனுக்குப் பதினொரு வரிஷம் கத்தர் இருசலெமிலை அவனுக்கு அரசாச்சியைக் கொடுத்தார்.
The Lord gave him reign over Jerusalem for eleven years.
பதினொரு வரிஷ இருசலெமிலை ஆள்கிற வாய்ப்பு கிடைத்தாலும் அவன் தன் தேவனாகிய கத்தருக்கு முன்பாக பொல்லாப்பானதையே செய்துவந்தான்.
Although he was given an opportunity to reign in Jerusalem for eleven years he did always evil in the sight of the Lord.
கத்தர் இரேமியா திருக்கதர்சி இன்மொலமாக அவனுக்கு ஞாயத்திருப்பைச் சொல்ல ஆரம்பித்தார்.
It was through the prophet Jeremiah that the Lord spoke judgment to him.
ஆனால் அவன் அதுக்கு செவிசாய்க்கவே இல்லை.
But he did not harken to it.
இரண்டாம் நாலாகமும், முப்பதியாராம் அதிகாரம், பனிரண்டு பதிமூனு வசனங்களை நாம் பார்க்கலாம்.
Second Chronicles thirty six chapter twelve and thirteen.
தன் தேவனாகிய கத்தரை பார்வைக்கு பொல்லாப்பானதைச் செய்தான் அவன் கத்தரடிய வாக்கை உரைத்த இரேமியா என்கு திருக்கதர்சிக்கு முன்பாக தன்னை தாள்த்தவில்லை, தேவன்மேல் தன்னை ஆனையிடுத்துக்கொண்ட நெபுகத் நேசாரென்றும் ராஜாவுக்கு விரோதமாய் கலகமண்ணி இச்சிரவேலின் தேவனாகிய கத்தருட்டுக்குத் திரும்பாதவடிக்கு தன் கலத்தை அல்த்தமாக்கி தன் இருதைதைக் கடினபடுத்தினான்.
பாத்தீங்களா? அவ்வந்தே வாள்கை எவ்வளவு நிற்பன்னமாய் போய்விட்டது என்று பாருங்க.
See how terrible became his life.
அவ்வந்தே வாள்கையிலே அவன் கத்தரடிய பார்வைக்கு பொல்லாப்பானதைச் செய்தான். கத்தரடிய திருக்கதர்சி சொன்ன வார்த்தைக்கு அவன் திருக்கதர்சிக்கு முன்பாக தன்னை தாள்த்தவே இல்லை.
He did evil in the sight of the Lord and when the prophet spoke to him he did not listen to that prophet to humble himself.
அவன் தன்னை தாள்தாத பட்சத்திலே அவன் கண்டே கலத்தை அள்ளத்தமாக்கினான் என்று சொல்லிருக்கிறது.
Because he did not humble himself he stiffened his neck it said.
அத்தன் இருதைதைக் கடினபடுத்தினான்.
He hardened his heart.
பதினாராவ வசனத்தைப் பார்க்கும்படுது.
When we read in sixteenth verse.
கத்தரடிய உக்கரமும் அவன்மேல் மூண்டது சகாயமில்லாமல் அவனுக்கு போய்விட்டது.
The wrath of the Lord rose against him and until there was no remedy.
பிரிய மனோவே நம்முடை அறிவியத்திலே நாம் கத்தரே வார்த்தை கேட்கும்படுது உடனே நம்மை தாள்த்தி பலக வேண்டும்.
Dear beloved when we harken to the words of the Lord we should immediately humble ourselves.
உன்னைக் கலத்தை அல்த்தமாக்குக்கூடாது.
You should not stiffen your neck.
நம்முடை இருதைதை நம் கடினபடுத்த கூடாது.
You should not harden our heart.
அப்புறது நமக்கு சகாயமில்லாமல் போய்விடும்.
If so we will have no remedy.
இதன் சிதேக்கியாவின் வாள்கில் நடந்த கஷ்டமான ஒரு குசூனலை.
This is the troubleless situation in the life of Sidikia.
கதைசியாக.
Lastly.
தானியல் ஐந்தா அதிகாரத்திலே பார்க்கும்படுது.
When we read in Daniel chapter five.
பெல்சாத்சார் என்கிற ஒரு ராஜாவைக் கூறித் தான் பார்க்கலாம்.
We read about a king called Beershahzhar.
அவன் அந்த நெபுகத் நேசாருடைய மகன்.
He is the son of Nebuchadnezzar.
அவனுக்கு முழு ஆச்சியும் அவன் கையிலே கிடைத்திருந்தது.
He had the whole reign.
ஆனாலும் குடை அவன் தன்னை தாள்த்தவில்லை.
Even then he could not humble himself.
அவன் இஸ்திரத்துக்கு அவன் செயல்பட ஆரம்பித்தான்.
He began to walk according to his own accord.
தானியல் ஐந்தா மதிகாரம், இருவத்தி இரண்டாவ வசனம்.
Daniel five twenty two.
அவருடைய குமாரனாகிய பெல்சாத்சார் இன்னும் நீரோவென்றால் இதையெல்லாம் அறிந்திருந்தோம் உன்திருதைதை தாள்தாமல்.
இருதை அவன் தாள்த்தவே இல்லை.
He did not humble his heart.
அவனுக்கெல்லாம் தெரியும்.
He knew everything.
நமக்கு சத்தியம் தெரியும்.
We know truth.
உபதேசம் தெரியும்.
We know the doctrines.
ஏசு வரப்போகிறாருன்று தெரியும்.
We know that Jesus is coming soon.
உபத்தரவாகாலம் உண்டுன்று தெரியும்.
We know that there is time of tribulation.
ஏத்திய ஞாயத்திருப்பு உண்டுன்று தெரியும்.
We know there is eternal judgment.
எல்லாம் தெரிஞ்சுக்கூட நாம் இஸ்திரத்துக்கு நாம் போய்கொண்டே இருக்கிறோம்.
Knowing all this we go on our own accord.
நமக்கு சத்தியம் தெரியாதா?
Do we not know the truth?
பைபில் தெரியாதா?
Do we not know the word of God?
இது என்ன நடக்கபோது நமக்கு தெரியாதா?
Do we not know what is going to happen?
எவ்வளவு பெரிய ஞாயத்திருப்பு வரப்போது என்று தெரியாதா?
Do we not know what a great judgment is going to come?
எல்லாம் தெரியும். ஆனால் அறிந்திருந்தோம் நாம் நம்முடை இருதைதை தாள்தாமல் போய்கொண்டே இருக்கிறோம்.
Knowing all this not able to humble our heart we are going on.
நமக்கு கிடைக்கிற நாள்களை நாம் தாள்தி தேவனுத்திருந்து கிருவையை நம்பிட்டுக்கொளவேண்டியது அவசியம்.
In the days that are given to us we should humble ourselves and receive the grace from the Lord.
இந்த பெல்சாத்சார் அவன் எல்லாவற்றிய அறிந்து தன்னுடை இருதைதை தாள்தாமல் போனும்படுது என்ன நடந்தது தெரியுமா?
When this Belshazzar knowing all this when he did not humble himself what happened?
தானியல் ஐந்தா மதிகாரம் முப்பதாவ வசனத்திலே.
Daniel five thirty.
அந்திராத்திரிலே கல்தீரின் ராஜாவாகிய பெல்சாத்சார் பொலி செய்யப்பட்டான்.
முடிந்ததா? அவ்வந்தே ஓட்டம் முடிந்துவிட்டதா?
His race was over.
காரணம் என்ன?
The reason is?
அவன் புசித்தான், குடித்தான், வைப்பாட்டிகள், மறுமுனையாட்டிகள் இப்படிபட்ட அனேக தவறான பளக்கவளக்குளை அவன் வைத்திருந்தான்.
He ate and drank and he had very wrong relationship with his wives and concubines.
எல்லாவற்றுக்கு மேலாக.
More than this?
குடிக்கிறதுக்காக தேவனுடைய ஆலையத்தின் பனிமூடை உபயோகப்பட்டினான்.
He used the vessels of the house of the Lord to drink.
எப்படி இருக்குன்னு யோச்சு பாருங்க.
Just see how it is?
குடிக்கிறது தப்பு.
It is wrong to drink.
மனிவியத்தை வேற ஆள் தொடர்ந்து தப்பு.
It is wrong to touch any others than the wife.
இப்போ குடிக்கிறது தவறு மன எல்லா பெண்களையும் வச்சிக்குது அந்தக்குப் பாத்த கத்தரடிய ஆலையத்திலுள்ள பாத்தரத்தை ஊதி குடிக்க ஆரம்பிச்சா.
Having all the concubines and wives he began to drink with the vessels from the house of the Lord.
ஏற்கனவே உன்னுடை தகப்பன் தன்னை தாள்தாமல் நான் கட்டின பாபிலோன் என்று தன்னை வேற்கனைபொழுது தேவனை அவனை அடித்து மிருகமாய் மாற்றிவைத்திருந்தார்.
Already his father when he did not humble himself and said that this Babylon whom I have built the Lord justized him and he was made a beast.
ஏழு வரிஷம் மிருகம் போல வைக்கோலத் தின்னிட்டு சுத்தியிட்டு நான் இவங்க அப்பா.
For seven years he was moving around like the beast and eating the grass of the field.
அப்படி மிருகம் போலும் சுத்தியிட்டு இருந்தவனா கத்தர் மறுவடியும் ராஜ்யத்தைக் கொண்டுவந்தார்.
He who was roaming like the beast the Lord brought him back to the kingdom.
இப்போ அவனுக்கு பரந்த பிள்ளைக்கு இந்த சிந்தை மறந்து போய்விட்டது.
Now the son who was born to him this thought was going off.
இப்பத் துணிகரமாக குடிக்க வைப்பாட்டிகள் இலவடல் மறுவடி தன்னை அறிவியத்தைத் தாருமாறாகிக்கொண்டு தேவனுடைய ஆலையத்தின் பனிமூட்டுகளைத் திட்டுபடுத்த ஆரம்பித்தான்.
Now he wanted he of his own accord he began to defile himself with vessels from the house of the Lord and with his concubines drinking wine.
அனைத்து தானியல் சொன்னா எல்லாம் அறிந்திருந்து நீ உன்னை இருதைதைத் தாள்த்தலை.
Therefore Daniel said having known all this you have not humbled yourself.
அந்த வார்த்தை கேட்ட பொழுது அந்திரவே அவன் கொல்லப்பட்டான்.
When he heard these words that night he was killed.
நமக்கெல்லாம் தெரியும். இஸ்திரத்துக்கு போறோம். ஞாயத்திருப்பைச் சிக்கிரமாய் பெறுவோம்.
We know all this and we are going on our own accord soon judgment is going to come.
தாள்தாவிட்டால் சங்கடில் அளிவே.
If we do not humble ourselves then there is destruction in the Red Sea.
தாள்தாத பாருவன் அளிக்கப்பட்டான்.
The Pharaoh who was not completely humble himself was destroyed.
தாள்தாத ஆமூன் கொல்லப்பட்டான்.
The Ammon who did not humble himself was slain.
தாள்தாத சிதேக்கியாவுக்கு சகாயமில்லாமல் போய்விட்டது.
And Sidikia who could not humble himself he did not find the favor.
எல்லா அறிந்து அந்த பெல்சாத்சார் தன்னை தாள்த்தது பொழுது அந்திரவே அவன் கொல்லப்பட்டான்.
And Belshazzar who did not humble himself that same night he was slain.
பிரிய மனோவே நம்மை தாள்தினால் தேவன் நம்மை உயர்த்துவார்.
Dear beloved if we humble ourselves then the Lord will lift us up.
நம்மை நான் தாள்தினால் இந்த ஊர்க்கு ஒரு ஆசிரவாதம் உண்டாகும்.
If we humble ourselves then we will become a blessing to this place.
மர்ந்தபொறியின்றன்னை தாள்தினால் மகிமையிலே நாம் மேன்மையான மகிமையான நாவத்தை நம்பிட்டுக்கொள்வோம்.
If we humble ourselves unto death then in the glory we will receive a greater name.
தாள்தினால் உன்னுடை அறிவியத்திலே பொல்லாப்புலாமலே தப்புவிக்கப்படுவாய்.
If you are humbling yourself then you will be delivered from all evil.
தாள்தினால் சகாயம் கிடைக்கும்.
If you if you humble yourself then you will receive the help from the Lord.
தாள்தினால் எலந்துபோனது உனக்கு கிடைக்கும்.
If you humble yourself then all you what you have lost you will gain.
தாள்தினால் ஜயதோடு உன்னுடை ஓட்டம் சமாதநத்தோடு முடியும்.
If you humble yourself then your race will be ended up with peace.
எல்லா அர்கங்களை மொடுவோம்.
Let's all close eyes.
ஒரு விஷய நம்மை தாள்த்துமடியாக தேவனுடைய சன்னிதானத்திலே நம்மை ஒப்புகொடுப்போம்.
Let us offer ourselves to humble ourselves once again in the presence of the Lord.
எத்தனவேறு இந்த மாலைவெளிலே உங்களை தாள்த்துமடியாக கத்தரடிய பாதத்திலே நீங்கள் உங்களை சமர்ப்பிக்கிறீர்கள்.
How many of you want to humble yourself in the presence of the Lord to humble yourself this evening?
இந்தக்கு அனேகு தங்களை தாள்த்த முடியாது உலகாப்படுகிறார்கள்.
Today many of them are not able to humble themselves.
நாம் நம்மை தாள்த்துவோம்.
Let us humble ourselves.
நம்மை தாள்த்துமடுது தேவன் நம்மை காணப்படுத்துவார்.
When we humble ourselves the Lord will exhort us.
எல்லா அர்கங்களை மொடிமுழங்கல் படிட்டு கத்தரடிய சமூகத்திலே ஆன்றவரே நான் என்னே வசன தேவனுடை வசனங்களுக்குக் கிள்ப்புடிந்தே எனைத் தாள்த்தியை ஒப்புகொடுக்கிறேன் என்று சொல்வோம்.
Let us all close our eyes and say Lord I yield message to the word of God to humble myself.